People in the boardroom. I'd like to start the meeting in a rather unusual way. Could David please come up? All the way, David, all the way up here because this is the gavel. And you are going to do the official banging in of the meeting. And there's, and there's the recipient right here of the bang ready to give. David, what's your last name?
Russell.
David Russell is going to lead, is going to open the meeting. Ready, David? Hit it once. Thank you.
Turn around, they want to get a picture.
So as I told folks before, this, this gavel came from my dad when he was a young, young person and, and he passed it on to me and I'm letting you bore it for just a day. Thank you, David. So I'd like to call to order, David and I would like to call to order the Celine Area Schools Board of Education Meeting of April 11th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. As you are able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's the best pledge we've had.
I know, that's a very robust pledge. Thank you so much. I do have a brief message that I'd like to share with the whole community, those listening at home and tomorrow on YouTube. I would like to take a moment to remind voters that Celine Area Schools will be on the ballot on Tuesday, May 2nd, just 21 short sleeps away for an operating millage renewal. Now, it's important to clarify, this is not a bond. This is Celine Area Schools ongoing renewal request for our operating millage, which covers our day-to-day operations. The millage is part of how the state of Michigan organizes school funding and it was determined by Proposal A in 1994. There will be no change to your current taxes by voting yes. If approved, it is a renewal to continue the operating millage for another 10 years. And if approved, the millage would be paid by second homes, businesses, and all other non-principal residence properties. So if you own one home in the area, you would not pay this millage. I am urging you all to vote yes on this millage on May 2nd or to fill out your absentee ballot and mail it in or drop it off at the appropriate location. And for more information, please visit celineschools.org and click on the box titled Millage Renewal, May 2023. Thank you so much for your patience. This is the time for a public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note that students will be given priority to speak on any topic. The first public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to a half an hour, 30 minutes normally, and limited to agenda items. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda to follow for any comment. Any individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. So are there any student speakers? Are there any public stakeholder? There are nothing. I could have skipped that whole thing then. Did you see that I stopped midway through? That's when I was thinking, I should have checked with Betty. So I have no response to a previous public comment because there were none except for one at the end. Items, this is the time for the revision or approval of the agenda. Items can be added or deleted from the meeting agenda and/or the order of items can be changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding further. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Moeseng Gerby.
Support, Eastep.
Thank you. There's no discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And seeing no opposition, we have an agenda. Brad Gerby, thank you. We have a, two student showcases this evening and one is the STAR group and the other is Heritage Leadership. So I would like to let the coordinators just take their turns and come on up. And you've been trained on how to use the microphone?
Is it working? Great, thanks. Hi, if most of you know me, I'm Megan DeGrand. To some of you, I travel all the way to Florida to see, apparently. I am the very proud principal of Heritage School and I have many reasons in here to be very proud with this show of awesome students. It has been a wild ride to get on this schedule, but we appreciate you allowing us to celebrate and share two great student-centered programs with you. Thank you to Allison Doran for getting this going earlier in the fall. Tonight, I am proud to kick off with our Heritage STAR program. This program was designed by Kim Munn, a high school speech pathologist years ago and is still going strong all throughout the district. Last year, Barry Burnett, Brooke Gilb, and I got things going at Heritage in January. It began with bi-weekly meetings with, where students were able to engage and socialize with peers that are different from themselves. This year, we have upped it a little bit and we have grown in our capacity. We meet each week this year and once a week is purely social connecting with students, with a very diverse group of students. On the off week, we have been fortunate enough to welcome guest speakers who teach our group about exceptionalities, disabilities, and inclusiveness for all. We'll share a video and then this year's coordinators, Barry Burnett, Amanda McKinney, Lindy Torvonen, Brooke Gilb, and Ava Wilkos, along with two STAR representatives can answer questions for you. So you can go ahead and roll that video.
STAR stands for Students Talking and Relating.
At STAR, we learn about disabilities and differences.
We make friends and support each other.
We have fun.
We learn about confidentiality respect and disability awareness.
We are reading the book Just Ask by Sonia Sotomayor. It is awesome.
Last week, we learned about diabetes.
Last week, we had a guest speaker come in to talk about disabilities.
My name is Zach and I've been a type 1 diabetic for a few years now. This would be my fourth year having type 1 diabetes. I was able to get a glucose sensor which automatically basically delivers a notification every five minutes about what my blood sugar level is.
We, we will have special guest teachers teaching us about disabilities all year long.
We meet every other week in March group and play games.
My favorite thing about STAR is that I get to learn about everyone and I get to eat lunch and learn about more people.
My favorite thing about STAR is that all of us in the lunchroom get to have fun together every single Wednesday.
My favorite thing about STAR is that you can eat your lunch and play with friends. Like you can meet new friends and you can learn about disabilities that others can have and, and meet other people that has the same disabilities that you.
So we have some bookmarks that we made where all the kids signed on them. And Mrs. McKinney, who has a very nice touch, made them look nice and they're for you guys to keep, to remember our program. But now if you, anyone has any questions, you feel free to ask and we will do our best to answer.
I just have a quick comment. First of all, Allison, yay, alright. And, and you know, bravo to your team, you know? When I think about, we've really talked a lot in the last couple of years about social, emotional supports and mental health. And, and so I see a lot of things in here that, you know, I, I saw, you know, there was a literacy component, there was a building community component, empathy, right? Like, so anyway, so I applaud you and it takes like such good leaders to do this. And so I'm looking at the young man in the center and you guys around, like, just, you know, like, thank you for taking the initiative to do this work because it's not easy, but it really does make an impact on our, our school community. So thanks.
So first, we can only have a few of you at the microphone, right? But if you are in STAR and you're sitting in a chair, could you stand up so we can see all of you? Thank you. Thanks, Joey. Awesome. And I know many others are in the club, obviously we can see in the pictures, but that you couldn't, couldn't be here tonight. So thanks for joining us. We want to celebrate that. I remember when STAR was started because my oldest daughter, who's now in college, was at Woodland Meadows and I'm, I know Mrs. DeGrand was there too and I, maybe Mr. Burnett was there as a, as a TA then, or a parent educator then. So I remember when it was started and what a remarkable program it was for my own three children, but for the connections that they've made and carried on to this day. My daughter has a really good friend that she keeps in contact with, that she met through STAR. So just the connections are long-lasting and the, the key being having relationships and, and building those relationships with people who you might not have encountered otherwise. I also love that you included Zach Lindeman. I know that's been quite a journey for him and what a special thing for him to be able to model, how he can share and raise awareness for others. So thanks for including him. I want to give a special plug too, that if you're, if you're starting in STAR now, you can continue to be involved in clubs through the middle school. And my two younger kids, they're twins, they're juniors now, they're both on the executive council for a club called Connecting, which is a lot like STAR. So you can continue to be involved like this. And because I'm their mom, they would love for me to tell you to be involved and to continue to be involved in that as you get older. So bravo to you for seeking this out. Bravo to the advisors. I don't know all of you, but I'm so thankful for you and the work that you do to build, to build another facet of, of learning for our students. So thank you.
I noticed that you read Just Ask. I heard that in the video. That's one of my favorite books and I think very, very appropriate. My question for you is how do you get involved? How do you select advisors and how do you invite students to participate in the program?
So last year, Mrs. DeGrand and I were talking and we know a lot of the other elementaries have a STAR and actually middle school does as well. So we saw a need for it and she kind of, I guess, asked me to do it. So I was like, alright, I need, I need, I need good support. So Ms. Gilb was like the first person I asked. She's our school social worker, so that made a lot of sense. And then we kind of got it off and running last year. It was kind of a shell of a program, I would say. Definitely didn't dive this deep into disabilities and awareness. So this summer, we saw an opportunity to grow with both staff and students. Last year, teachers nominated the students. This year, we had applications, which really kind of figured out who had a real interest in it. Because it took, it wasn't an easy application. There was quite a few questions to answer. What was really hard was going through the applications and choosing kids because we had tons of, tons of them. And we had to cap our, our program, I think we have 80 people in it for shirts and just logistical reasons of space. So it was, it was hard to turn away kids, hoping we can grow, but we'll see.
So I also have a couple of alumni of STAR at home and it really was so great for them and they still use language that I know they learned at Woodland Meadows and with Mrs. Munn. So bravo. To ask Brad Gerby question, what do you need from us? How can we help? How can we support this program in expanding? Because I think this is really helpful for students in our community.
That's, that's a really good question. I think just getting it out there, making it known. I think Kevin's done a good job this year. Last year, we kind of had our own shirts and this year, every elementary has the same shirt. So we're kind of unifying that, making it a whole school district approach. And I'd like to see like the seamless transitions from Lower L to us to middle school and so forth. So just, just being aware of it and getting the word out that this is an opportunity for kids.
Are there snacks involved?
There are. That, that actually is a good point. And Gilb, Ms. Gilb might be able to answer how we acquire those snacks, but that's very important. That's the number one question we probably get asked when kids come is what is a snack? So how do we acquire snacks?
So we have been very fortunate to have a lot of parents donate snacks this year. The special ed department has purchased some snacks, but we are always in need of snacks. So that is, that would be a great way to support. And so like Megan said, we have lunch groups. Tomorrow, we have lunch groups and then the opposite Wednesdays, we have it at 3 o'clock where we have guest speakers or play games and stuff. So you are all welcome to come see us sometime or join a group.
That's me volunteering. Thank you for presenting on this. You all, talking to the students, are creating an environment for those in the elementary schools below. And I do like that idea of like the seamless, you know, unifying with the shirts and everything. But you are creating like a really great environment for students coming into Heritage and hopefully can move that on to the middle school as well and continue that. I think that's wonderful. I'm excited about the guest speakers. That, you know, just even seeing a little bit of that clip, you know, you're not putting the onus on like the students necessarily, right? To, to explain like how they're, like the differences and everything. And so having those guest speakers to, for others to see themselves or to learn about, you know, others who experience different things in, in their life. So thank you for providing that and I'm excited to see it expand more across the whole district. Thanks.
Would you like to stay for the next brief presentation and then go leave with the rest? That would be great. We'd love for you to stick around for the next short presentation. Thank you so much. Nice, nice.
Seamless transition for Principal DeGrand. Good evening, everybody. My name is Cameron Cochran. I am the proud assistant principal at Heritage School. Thank you to my colleagues and the wonderful students who presented on STAR. It's my honor to introduce our next group here, which is our Heritage Student Leadership Cohort. I'm going to do less of an intro here because they've worked really hard on a slide deck in collaboration with their staff advisors, Mrs. Allison Pete and Mrs. Nicole Gibson. This should be a really easy thing for our students because they're actually used to presenting in front of a group of over 650 students one Friday a month at our community meetings. So without further ado, I'm going to pass it over to Mrs. Pete, Mrs. Gibson, and Gwyneth.
Hi, I'm Gwyneth.
And I'm Natalia.
We are going to tell you what we love about student leadership.
One thing we love is being creative. For every charity and foundation we support, we get to make posters about that and hang them around the school.
It's fun to share our creativity with others and doing it with friends.
That's another thing we love, building friendships.
Being in leadership lets us bond with one another and make friends with other students while having fun.
In leadership, we help support our community at Heritage and in Celine. We also support communities outside of Celine.
For example, we donated books for the book drive to many different schools in other cities.
Another part we love is when we present in front of the whole school at community meetings and help make decisions about what we can do to help our community.
We are working hard to bring positivity and community to our school and our city.
These are just a few things that we love about leadership.
Hello, I'm Bree.
And I'm Kenzie.
We will be talking about Heritage Community Meetings.
At Heritage, we gather together for a community meeting each month.
Community meetings are a chance for our whole school to come together and share positive messages and celebrate student success.
At community meetings, we celebrate classes for being respectful, responsible, and kinder than necessary.
Some of our Heritage Award includes the Golden Shoe, Golden Lunch Tray, and the Golden Recession Award and the Golden Dust Band.
Let me tell you about one of these awards. The Golden Shoe is an award that is given to classes, one 4th grade and one 5th grade class, who demonstrate respectful and responsible behavior when walking in the hallway or for showing respect, responsibility, and kindness in their specialist classes.
Classes earn gold tickets for these behaviors. The classes with the most gold tickets at the end of each month will receive the Golden Shoe.
That is how we do community meetings at Heritage.
Hi, I'm Kenley.
Hi, I'm Sydney.
And I'm Olivia. And we're here to talk about the school store.
The school store is a place where students can come and spend their blue tickets. Teachers and staff at Heritage give out blue tickets when they notice students being respectful, responsible, and kinder than necessary. Students can earn blue tickets in their classroom, at lunch, or recess, the hallway, and at specials. These tickets are very important. Once students collect, collect enough tickets to buy stuff in the school store, including toys, stickers, pencils, backpacks, notepads, and many other cool items.
Thank you for listening to our presentation.
Each October, Heritage Student Leadership has a collection for Halloween candy called Treats for Troops. We partnered with Celine's Orthodontist to raise over 500 pounds of candy that was shipped to troops overseas so that they could enjoy a Halloween treat.
Hello, I'm Abby.
And I'm Emily. We are going to tell you about our winter toy drive.
Over the last seven years, we have raised several thousand toys for children in local communities.
We have worked with Toys for Tots, Celine Social Services, to bring toys to our community.
We raise these to help children in need to have wonderful holidays.
We try every year to be our previous record of toys raised so we can help more children each year.
The more toys, the more toys we can donate, the more children will be happy.
It's like Heritage Santa.
Student Leadership does a fundraiser every winter.
This is still just one fundraiser that we do. We do so many more.
One of our biggest student leadership fundraisers of the year is Candygrams.
Candygrams are a fun, fun way for students to send positive messages to their friends with a special treat for Valentine's Day.
What's also special about Candygrams is that students can color and decorate them how they like. We can send them to anyone in the building, which is a great way to connect with friends that we haven't seen since 3rd grade.
All of the funds raised goes toward purchasing items for our school store. Students love when we purchase more items for our school store to buy.
This year, we sold and delivered almost 3,000 Candygrams. We love passing them out to others this year. We love passing them out to others and spreading positivity in our classroom. At Heritage, we make sure each student receives a Candygram.
Her names are Lily and Eliza. We wanted to share about the Marches Reading Month Book Drive. Each March, we collect books for the Dean Ledford Memorial Foundation, which collects books for schools in need. The books we collected this year went to schools in Dearborn Heights in Detroit. They also went to the WISD. We complete this book drive every March for Marches Reading Month.
This year, our school raised a grand total of 4,479 books. That was about 1,000 books more than last year. We would like to send a special thank you to all Celine community members and students at Heritage for donating. The Dean Ledford Foundation was overjoyed by the generosity of everyone in the school. After loading all the books into the car, we celebrated with donuts and drinks.
The students from Dearborn Heights, Detroit, and the WISD were amazed by everyone helping the schools. Thank you for listening to our presentation about the book drive.
Coming to a new school can sometimes be a little scary. This is why we think it is important for 3rd grade students to see Heritage before the start of the school year.
In May, Heritage hosts a special transition night where students and families get to see what Heritage is all about. They get to take a tour of the building, see special classrooms, and see some 4th grade classrooms. The leadership stands will be present in rooms and stations there at the hallway. This allows 3rd graders to ask more questions about the school and what they can expect. Mrs. Pete and Mrs. Gibson are, are also there to help answer any questions and meet the families.
Celine 3rd graders, 3rd graders also have the chance to come visit Heritage during the school day. In May, each elementary school brings all their 3rd graders to Heritage to get a building tour. Our student leadership representatives take students on a tour of the building and answer any questions that they may have. We love meeting the new students and helping them feel more comfortable to start their 4th grades, their 4th grade year at Heritage. Transition night is super important and a fun way for students to feel ready to come to Heritage.
Hi, thank you so much for having us. I'm Allison Pete and we are so proud of them. They have worked a long time and I know they were really nervous and we can't say enough how much we put them on the spot and like demand so much of them on a weekly or daily basis. Some of them were like, grab an extra shirt, you're standing at the community meeting, like, stand up, you gotta go right now, here's your script. And they're like, okay. And they go and they don't complain and they are so hardworking and they have done so much for our community and our school and we are very proud of them. Yes.
And I'm Mrs. Nicole Gibson. And just to kind of add on to that, not only are they presenting at community meetings, but they also take this information back to their classrooms and they're sharing it with all of their classes. They kind of are willing to go above and beyond to help their class and anyone else in need. So thank you so much for having us and at this time, we'll take any questions.
Very impressed with everything that they do. So how many members are there? Did I miss? Did they?
25.
25.
We have one from each class.
Okay. So, so they do a lot of, 25 people do a lot of work.
Yep, they do.
Get a lot of books.
They're responsible for like bringing everything, like it's their job to tell everything we learn and do back to their class on top of all the other things.
So that, that's great. So I, I was wondering how many there were because I was looking at the list of everything they're doing and the number of books and the, you know, all the effort.
It's a lot.
That's great. Congratulations. That's awesome.
Alright, so first of all, you made me think about, okay, so how are those individuals from each class selected?
Well, we usually ask all their classroom teachers. They give them like a little bit of a spiel about like what we're looking for for student leadership. And then these kids have to give a speech to their classes or they at least have to write one, showing why they should be a good representation for their classroom and why they're responsible and ready to take on this job and be able to commit to, we have before-school meetings every other Tuesday, so they also have to be ready to commit to like coming in at 7:45 every other Tuesday. And so they have to present that to their class. And then a lot of times, the class has like a, an anonymous vote and then they decide who it's going to be. And then we get our lucky members.
Alright, well, my Bryce, I could tell you, really misses blue tickets, right? Like that, that, that helped his with his, his behavioral things and all kinds of things. So I love the confidence. So each of you should be incredibly proud of yourself for being willing to stand up here and being willing to, to do that in front of like this big room of all these people. So first of all, I want to make sure I say that. Now, you said that the bar for the toy drive is always set a little higher. What's the current number of the toy drive bar?
Oh, gosh.
Oh.
No, that was the book drive.
The book drive.
The toy drive was somewhere around 600, I think.
600?
Yeah.
And 4,000 bucks and 3,000 Candygrams?
Yes.
Bravo, guys. Awesome.
Alright, so I just wanted to say a couple of things too. I always have to relate it back to my own personal experience too. So my juniors were on the leadership team, at least one of them, and then the other one came in the very first year. Do you remember, Allison? Yes, Drew, Drew, uh, kicked it off with you and Mrs. Turner. And, um, so that was the first year that there was Heritage Leadership. And Drew is still the class president and hoping to be class president again. Um, and I know that his, his roots from Heritage, uh, have carried him in his leadership. Since then, it just has created, um, someone who, like you said, wants to create positivity, um, and community at their school and in their community at large. So, I really appreciate the work that the two of you do to instill that in, in these kids and to really bring, um, all students together through those twenty-five leaders. Um, I especially just wanted to mention that it is, um, extremely special to see the Dean Ledford Memorial Foundation. Um, I knew Dean personally and know his mom and, um, I just, it is really, really special to me that this group of kids who may not have even known Dean, um, are carrying his legacy forward and he would love this. So, thank you so much for doing that and especially books. Being the literacy person, I'm, I'm loving that it's connected to books. So, thank you so much.
As a mom, you're making me really miss this age, because I'm not gonna get it again. Um, you're doing really important work. It's really difficult to get up in front of six hundred of your peers. Sometimes it's harder to speak in front of people that you know versus people that you don't know. So, I wanted to acknowledge what a great job you're doing. Um, and I wanted to let you know how impactful the work that you're doing is on the future generations. Because I'm, I'm loving that the, the third grade Transition Night slide is up here. Because I remember when my twins came from Pleasant Ridge to Heritage, they went to this Transition Night and they felt so much more comfortable because the leadership students welcomed them. They knew a couple back from PR. And they felt so comfortable and it made them less scared. So, you're really helping other students. Um, and my Sydney was in, in leadership and, uh, had a wonderful time. So, thank you very much to the principals, advisors and all of the kids. Good job.
Sure. Um, so, great job everybody. Um, I'm just wondering where these kids get the time and energy. Um, but, uh, just keep doing what you're doing and keep leading in the community and, um, this is what makes Celine great.
Put in a plug real quick too, cause I forgot to say this and I should have. Every single one of you, hopefully, since you're doing those things like transitions and all that, web leaders and link crew, right? Like, this really will funnel into those things. So, I'm putting a plug in your guys' ears to it. Web and link crew. Think about them.
No, no pressure, no pressure. Well, I just wanted to say, uh, th- first of all, uh, I'm incredibly proud of all of the students and the teachers for, for organizing them and perhaps sometimes they organize you. I get that, I get that. I just wanted to say to all the, the young folks in the audience, you not only made your classrooms better and your schools a better place, but you have made Celine a better place. And when I heard about the candy drive for the troops, I can now say that you have made the world a better place. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. Now, if you wish to excuse yourself, go right ahead. We do have a one scheduled report after this, but we'll wait a minute or so until you all clear out and have a photo op and whatever else you need to do. Thank you so much. We're having a debate, Lauren and Susan, we're having a debate. That's peach, right? The color? Coral, 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 coral. Salmon. What are you wearing, Brad, Ben? That's salmon it is. Coral infused salmon. If you'd like to move a little closer, you're.
I was gonna say, this is, this is a little daunting when everybody walks out. Not gonna say it's the first time this has happened, but. In the back. You sit behind the organ. Who are you kidding? We gotta put one over there for you to just entertain us between.
Kurt, there's a step stool there if you need it.
Yeah, thanks. Alright, well, on that note, this is a tough act to follow. So, um, I appreciate the opportunity to come and, and give you a brief update on safety and security. Um, there are kind of two elements that we focus on with regard to safety and security. There's an operational side to things, which is kind of how we do business. And then there's more of the infrastructure. And I think tonight we're gonna focus a little bit more on the infrastructure side of things. Um, but certainly there'll be some operational highlights that I'll share. Uh, earlier today, Mr. Clary, myself and Mrs. Melcher had the opportunity to go to a training session over in our Pioneer High School that was put on by some folks from Oakland County. And one of the concepts that they talked about was doing what they call Blue Sky Day Planning. Meaning, you don't make plans when you're in the midst of crisis. You make the plans when things are going well. And, and we've tried really hard since that previous bond in two thousand fifteen to do just that. I'll go through kind of each of these in brief and then have a little deeper dive on all of them. But, uh, we'll talk a little bit about the safety team that continues to meet. Um, and it's a pretty broad-based team that serves the entire community, not just the school district. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about InformaCast, um, some things relative to the video system that we're going to, uh, be bringing before you here tonight for approval. Um, as well as our visitor and volunteer management. Uh, there's a mapping solution that we're pursuing through a state grant. Um, we have another Alice training or, or a critical incident training session coming up here next Monday night. And then, uh, our SEC security assessment. And last but not least, this collaborative training event that we're planning right now as a joint operation between ourselves, Pittsfield and Celine. Uh, our safety team, as I said, continues to meet on a very regular basis. I'm sorry for drifting away from this. Um, we've met six times since July first, which is, that cadence is probably a little more than normal. Uh, but there's just a lot more going on these days. And so, we're trying to continue to, to be responsive to that. We continue to review our immunity, emergency communications, uh, as well as our medical things. I know when people think about emergency operations, we often think about these big incidents like occurred in Nashville. Um, but the reality is most of our emergency operations, things fall into the category of medical emergencies. We have them very regularly. You often get updates as board members that an ambulance was called here or there. And we could not be more fortunate but to have, uh, Nurse Karen Hervey and a, and a small team of people that are, are really, really exceptional at what they do. Um, the biggest update for, uh, our, our medical, uh, operation side of things is we have Narcan in all of our buildings now. Um, Board Policy has for a long time supported the ability to have that in the buildings, uh, to treat opioid overdoses. And all of our staff that are on those first response teams at the building level are receiving that training now from Nurse Hervey. So, that is in place. Um, the group that meets on a regular basis is Mr. Clary, John DeCaro from Pittsfield, myself, Officer Gasaway, Matt Harshberger from Pittsfield, Chuck McCullough, uh, from the district, Mrs. Melcher, uh, Karen Hervey, Jason Holner from Pittsfield, Marlene Radzik, uh, Police Chief here, and then Aaron Roth, uh, who's a detective at Pittsfield. And Jason Spurley, who is the Celine Chief of, uh, Fire Chief. Uh, InformaCast, as you know, we've got a new addition to the boardroom here, uh, a couple of weeks ago. It is the system that we have, have brought into the district that is a part of our emergency notification system. It's not a standalone operation. It's a part of what we do. And, and really the reason that we brought that system into the district was to provide visual cues for people who couldn't hear and/or in spaces where hearing is just difficult. If you've been in a gym with a couple hundred people, announcements don't play well in there. If you've been in the cafeteria during the school day at lunch when there's six hundred students in there, announcements don't play very well in there. So, we brought InformaCast in to provide that visual cue. It has worked. Um, I will tell you that, uh, right now, the high school is operational, Pleasant Ridge is operational. We're about fifty percent done in this building. Uh, continue to kind of peck away at it. They're doing most of this work at night, so it's not interrupting the, the instructional day at all. Um, we do have some implementation issues and I want to make sure that I address that just so you hear it from us. Uh, you'll recall there was an incident this fall at the high school where we lost power. And what happened is that, that loss of power signaled to the system that there was a problem. And so, an alert was sent out. It happened to really unfortunately be on the exact anniversary of the Oxford shooting. And I know that that really, really, uh, caused some panic at the high school. But two things have happened since then. One, we have taken steps to make sure that the system was not gonna trigger that again. And two, I know that, that Mrs. Stager, the principal of the high school and that staff have worked really hard to make sure that our staff and students know what to do in the event of an emergency. I think there are really two problems. One is that system went off and two, because nobody was expecting it to go off, nobody knew what to do. And so, we have taken steps to make sure that it doesn't go off again. And so, that it, uh, if it does, that our staff knows what to do uh, with the students in that type of a situation. Here are some examples, uh, of what those visual cues look like in kind of real time and real space. And obviously, we've got one here in this space that you can see as well. Um, from a video standpoint, this might be like the most intensive and, and in some respects, kind of exciting stuff that we've got going on. We currently have about three hundred and fifty cameras deployed through the district. Um, often in spaces, you see there's a little bubble, just like you see at malls and whatnot. They're in our hallways, they're, are all over outside and whatnot. Um, our new system that, that you're gonna have, uh, brought before you as a proposal here tonight has four hundred and thirty-five plus cameras. And they have all kinds of capabilities that our current system does not. Um, they have artificial intelligence or AI capabilities. And, and to be clear, that doesn't mean that, you know, we can identify Steve Lottch when he walks in the door and follow him all through the district. But what it does allow our administrators and our, and our school resource officers to do is to follow incidents. So, if something happens, you can follow that through the building. Um, you can, you can identify kind of areas where there's unusual activity. I think one of the things that we're the most excited about is we can set alerts for spaces that shouldn't be occupied at certain times. And if something happens in those spaces, then an alert can go out. Um, right now, there are a lot of, you know, it's a big district, the high school alone, we've got over half million square feet. And, and there are places that people just shouldn't be at certain times. And if they are, we would get an alert to, to tell us that we're there. Um, the other thing that really we're excited about this new solution is that it has remote accessibility. And so, not that Principal Stager's looking for things to do when she's at home, but the things do happen on weekends. Exactly. But people do, things do happen on the weekends. And the ability to be able to take a look and see what that is before, you know, hopping in the car and running up there or deploying somebody uh, is something that will be very, very helpful. In the event there is a, a, a bad situation, we can also allow law enforcement to have that remote accessibility before they get on site. So, they have a sense of what they're walking into. Um, I, I do want to make it clear though, that we don't have the capacity or the manpower to monitor cameras twenty-four seven. This is not gonna be a live monitored situation. Um, and, and so, I want to make sure that that's clear to people. Uh, but our, again, our partners in law enforcement will have access in those types of emergency situations. Um, another really exciting part for us, as, as you know, we have had Raptor in our buildings for about three years now. We had a, a Pleasant Ridge, um, pilot program almost a decade ago. But we've been using Raptor for almost three years now as our visitor and volunteer management system. And it's really served us well. Um, but I think that, that there are things that we can do that will make it better. One is to integrate it more with our intercom system. And two, we'd really like to be able to move that capacity out into the vestibule. Right now, the people come into the buildings and they get processed by one of our office assistants. And that puts the office assistants in a really awkward spot. And candidly, the people are already in the building by the time that interaction takes place. And so, the system that we're looking at does integrate very, very well with the camera system. Um, people can pre-check before they get to the building, which they'll appreciate. They'll be able to save them some time. Uh, the, the system will be able to allow users or visitors that maybe check in at Heritage to then come check in at the middle school later, where right now our system is pretty building specific. So, we're really excited about this. And I think our office assistants will really feel a lot better as well, um, when that system gets implemented. Building mapping, this was something that the county, um, had, had put together some information on. There was a statewide grant that we applied for and we did receive that will fund this. Uh, and, and basically what it does is it takes the, the building schematics that we have, creates a digital mapping solution. And then we can share that with law enforcement. You know, I can sit there and say, hey, when you go to the high school, enter door number one. And I may know what that means, but somebody coming from Washtenaw County would have no idea. Uh, and, and this would allow them to have more information and more access. Um, I think as the city of Celine entertains the concept of going to a, a more, uh, countywide dispatch, this could have value. Because right now, when you call the city of Celine, I often know the person I'm talking to. I don't know that that's always gonna be the case. Uh, and so, having that building mapping for all seven of our buildings will really, really be important for us. And it'll be a nice asset for those partnerships we have with law enforcement. Um, Critical Incident Response Training, this is something that we've done annually since I want to say two thousand thirteen, fourteen-ish. Uh, we've continued to partner with Secure Education Consultants. Uh, we had a session this fall where we invited all of our new hires and anybody who had not received training or wanted to get a refresher to come. And, uh, and we had, I think, fifty-ish people come to that. We have another one scheduled Monday in this room at four o'clock. Uh, if any of you want to come, you're welcome to. Feel free, just let me know. Um, but that, that training, you know, we continue to provide for our staff. Um, I guess we said that we would do it since two thousand fifteen, so that was, that was close there. Um, we did, and I know we've mentioned this briefly, briefly in the past, but we did a security assessment with Secure Education Consultants. They came in and spent about three days on campus. I know they interviewed both of our, well, the principals that are here, but all the rest of them as well. And, and just observed operations. Um, and, and I think they gave us, I know they gave us a lengthy report. But the, the, the real key finding was that we need to create more structure in our evening activities. Um, if you go to the high school during the school day, it's very obvious who's in charge. If you go to Harvester in the school day, it's very obvious who's in charge. And you know who to ask if there are questions. Our buildings are used twenty-four seven. At the high school, middle school, about three hundred and sixty-one days a year. And there are times you can go in there and you're hard pressed to find somebody who's in charge. And that was one of the things that they felt we really needed to address. And so, we're taking steps to do that. It's not necessarily going to be a person. It's going to be a collaborative effort. I think that we've got to make sure that our custodians have a, a, a good sense of what their expectations are. Our community education department, who's often renting those spaces, needs to play a part in that. And then, and then the rest of us need to make sure that we're communicating those expectations as well. Um, but we do need to create more structure in those after-school and evening hours so that when there are incidents that come up, um, we can help out. One of the other things that I think we're gonna, I shouldn't say I think, we're going to do next year is, is when people want to come in and use our buildings, we're gonna have them submit a security plan for us. Um, and, and what that plan will do is it will make them identify, you know, what the exits are, what the spaces they're gonna use. It'll make them take a more active role in knowing the space that they're gonna be in. And, and some of, you know, a lot of our users are our own people. But the fact that they'll have to do that, I think will be something that'll be a real asset for us. And then the last piece I wanted to highlight to you today, and, and you're gonna see more about this as it comes up, we're gonna wanna make sure this is very public because it's gonna be a really big, uh, I think, event, is we have been working for the better part of this school year to plan this collaborative training event with Pittsfield, Celine, um, both Pittsfield, uh, Pittsfield and Celine Fire as well as police. Uh, they intend to bring Washtenaw County in as well. And they'll do multiple scenarios at the high school. Um, it's gonna be a training event for them. They're gonna ask us, uh, as staff to be a part of it to both observe and to participate as, as role players, for lack of a better way to describe it. Um, but it's, it's their training event. They're using our facility. And I think the value for us is we can see how they deal with emergencies. Um, it's very, very different than what schools do. And, and I think it's important that our folks know that, um, they have a role to play. Um, and, and I think it's really, really important that we provide that opportunity for those folks to get into our buildings, to, to see more about what we're doing, uh, but also for us to be able to observe them kind of doing their work as well. So, that will take place. Uh, we've tentatively scheduled it for June twenty-eighth, um, and may spill over into the twenty-ninth a little bit. But we'll have a, a, an opportunity to share more information with that as it comes. Cause there will be a lot of law enforcement there and we'll make sure that the, that everybody knows why that they're there. So, that was a mile-high view of, of this, um, and be happy to entertain any kind of questions.
Three or four miles high.
Yeah, there you go.
A, a quick question about this collaborative training event, which I've seen a few in, in some schools. I think we've done it on smaller, uh, levels. This sounds big. So, will there be, uh, I don't mean, will there be students involved? Uh, because a lot of times you see, like, I remember Columbine and other times, students exiting from windows and being led out into certain safety areas. Will, will there be students involved?
We, we, not with this one. At least not in this iteration of it. Um, I think what they'd like to do is to do this and then talk through how to include students in the future. But not in this one.
Oh, sorry. So, I guess, uh, also regarding the training, I know, um, University of Michigan Dearborn would do these. And, um, you know, with my history of, um, you know, um, like Virginia Tech, um, it, it's triggering, right? To kind of see that outside of your office window. Um, so, um, I know, uh, you were mentioning like, um, making sure that everybody knows that it's on campus. So, if there's like any summer camps or anything, that we could put that out to our community or something, um, would be helpful. Um, cause yeah, I would drive past and be like, ah, what's going on? Uh, but yeah, I remember a lot of, a lot of, um, you know, um, vehicles and, and cops on campus and stuff like that. So, um, and then I had a question about, and since that's one of the items, uh, tonight, the cameras. And so, I had a question about, um, I mean, I guess it's very specific. Um, but, uh, when cameras are needing to be replaced, um, are needing to be replaced, and I don't know if it'll look different from the ones we have now and the ones coming up, how quickly do those, do we expect for those to be replaced? Like, in a high-traffic area, if it, you know, goes down or whatever, how that happens?
Yeah, I, I would anticipate that the ability to replace them would be relatively quick, the way Jay is here as well. What's that?
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. The, the way this, the, the program is structured, and you correct me if I'm wrong, the way the program is structured, the camera has a license, and if, if the camera goes bad, you can replace the device and it just replaces within that same license. But, but the service is very, very quick.
I guess it's a matter of staff reporting it too, right?
Correct, yep, yep.
All right, great, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Are the students aware, like, at the high school level or that there are cameras? Is that something that students are aware of?
Yeah, they're aware where they are and they're also aware where they are.
Okay. And I just wondered, like, you know, they're being used for security, are they used for disciplinary purposes? And like, I'm just wondering about student privacy concerns, like, how are we balancing all of that?
So, in, in terms of, I'll go back to what I said before, we don't monitor them in real time, so if there's, we, we, we can't predict that there's going to be a fight based on the behaviors that we're watching. If there is a fight, yes, we will go back and watch that video to determine who was involved and things along those lines. It's often, we refer, it's like after-action analysis, and so, if, if something was reported stolen, we can go back and see, okay, that bag was sitting there, and you can see somebody go and pick it up. So there, there is, the students are well-aware that the cameras there is, Mrs. Stager said, they know or they're not as well. I can tell you, one of the things, we went and viewed a security center just a week ago, and one of the concepts that this particular site had put in place is they have cameras, and they have sensors, and then they have dummy cameras and dummy sensors, and they move them. And it, and it deals with exactly what Mrs. Stager talked about, is people know that there are certain areas that are, and so they just move them. And it helps with that. But no, we don't, we don't use them to, to, to try to curb behaviors, it's, it's after-action type stuff.
Can I clarify that just a little bit, Sorella? There, just when we're in regards to the, the cameras, when we're using them, if we're using them as a part of the due process for the students, but the students don't view them. We view them, the students aren't looking, to your point of student privacy, the students aren't watching the cameras, it's purely for us, or law enforcement if it has to be a part of that.
Thanks. The only other thing I would add to that is that they're also not in instructional spaces generally. There are in gyms, and I know gyms, we do teach in those spaces, but they're generally not in classrooms.
Our student rep has a quick question.
Sure.
I would just say, as a high school student, I mean, I'm not really swinging at people at like ten-thirty on a Tuesday, but I'm not super aware of where the cameras are, but I would say I am aware that there like are cameras, because I've heard of people who have got caught on them. That sheds me light on the situation.
I think, I think, you know, in this, for those of us that can remember a day when there weren't these bubbles on ceilings everywhere, they're, they're, they stand out a little bit. I think when you're a certain age, they've just always been, and, and so, they're, they're there, and I don't know that people pay a lot of attention to them unless they're trying to avoid detection.
I was just gonna mention too, since we're talking about all different kinds of scenarios, not just scenarios that would need discipline. I was a part of a, a review of video footage when we had a medical emergency, so again, that after-action, but we were able to watch how quickly the team responded to attend to a student who was in a dire situation. So I remember, it's been a few years, but Karen Hervey met with us and shared with us all mostly the things that we did right, and a few things that we could do differently the next time, and we're thankful that that team went into action and the rest of us could support them, and that the student had a good outcome. So I think that they're important for more than just disciplinary reasons, but also for a lot of other really, you know, a lot of other reasons that we would like to improve student outcomes.
No question.
So first of all, Narcan in every building, so first of all, so first of all, before I get too far, I want you to know how much I appreciate, like, this has been something, and it is something that's very important to me, as you've heard, and I appreciate our commitment to what you called blue-sky planning. I want to make sure I say that, okay? I mean, I'm really proud of InformaCast, and I'm proud of Raptor, and I'm proud of the way that we're utilizing, you know, technologies and, and our community, quite frankly, by funding bonds and doing these types of things has helped us to stay safe, warm, dry, et cetera. So anyway, I want to make sure I say that first. So back to Narcan in every building, what is the process to obtain it? And is there an update? Is there an expiration? I guess that's my first question.
Yes, yes to both. It's, it's obtained through the, the nurse program. It, if, the, the closest analogy I can give to you is it's very similar to the EpiPens. We have Epi, you know, students have EpiPens. If, if you're a student who has anaphylaxis, you, you may have an EpiPen that you bring from home, but we also have EpiPens in the office that Nurse Hervey is in charge of procuring. She makes sure that they don't expire, and when they do, she goes out and gets that supply and, and restocks that. If there is the need to administer, then there's the whole reporting procedure that goes along with, but it's all done through the office and through the nurse. It's not something where there's one in a classroom or something along those lines.
So those items are in the office?
Correct.
And then we have a critical response team, correct, at every building that is trained to know where those things are and implement that, correct?
Yep.
Okay. So the other, the next question was regarding critical response training. Do we, you said that we've offered one, and now we're offering another one. What is our requirement as far as participation in that, cause it's after-school?
Right.
And do we provide funding and pay for those individuals who are hourly individuals who would want to take advantage of those things as well? Maybe everybody is.
Yeah, the people who come to it are paid, and so, when we did it en masse a year and a half ago, two years ago, those people were paid. When we've done these sessions since, certified staff get paid their curriculum hourly rate, hourly people get paid their hourly rate to be there. There's a sign-in and a sign-out, so nobody's doing it, you know, they're certainly coming because they want to, to be better informed, but they are compensated for it.
And are all, can we say confidently that all, I mean, how, what, what percentage, I guess, of our employees could we say are trained in this?
It, I, I, I would say more than seventy-five percent.
Okay.
I, I can tell you, it vacillates just because our turnover is so regular. You guys see the personnel reports, it's, it's pretty regular, we do it twice a year, so. Yeah, at one point, we were well over ninety-five, and then as turnover continues to happen, we try to keep up with it with the twice-a-year thing.
Well, I, I will say that loud as a, as a trustee, as an individual, like, that spending money on this is, would be important to me.
Yeah.
And it would be something that, I appreciate you offering it, and I appreciate, if you, you want to offer this more than twice a year, you've got a, you know, you've got someone who would support that all the way from a financial side, I guess, and from wherever. Collaborative training, I appreciate that. Are they gonna give us a report back on any of their observations or feedback for areas where we could improve our own safety with our buildings?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that session would be one that would provide that, because it's gonna be, they're gonna set the scenarios. I think that that feedback is included in the SEC assessment that we had done, and I could certainly share that with the board. I think that would be something that, you know, we've gone into closed session in the past to talk about safety and security, and if we wanted to take a deep dive into that report, I think that would be an appropriate way to do that. It's about thirteen pages long. And again, most of it, you know, kind of, as, as, you know, we've noted, most of it's pretty complimentary about the things that we're doing, which you would expect since we've been engaged with this company for seven years, but there were some, some things that needed to be improved, and most notably, the evening stuff. So yeah, we could certainly take a deep dive into that.
Well, again, you have my appreciation, thank you.
I definitely want to kind of piggyback what Brad said here and thank the community for, especially in the two thousand sixteen bond, really kind of started a lot of this. I know that's when you kind of started that relationship with Secure Education Consultants. And one of the things I remember learning back then was the threats are constantly changing, so you're constantly having to change kind of what your, where, where things are going, and, and what was maybe a, a good school plan before changes, and now you have to adjust that plan. So with all the square footage, I mean, that, that's a lot of work, so. I appreciate you bringing up the InformaCast situation at the high school. Even after I got on the board, I got some people, you know, reaching out to me and asking about it, and I know I've, I've talked to Steve about it, and so I appreciate you, you informing everybody in the community about that. And then also, I really do like the idea of having people submit a security plan when they're, they're using these buildings, so, because a lot of times, like, like up above, Secure Education is saying that we need, you know, more of a person, more structure behind some of this, after-hours as, as well, when other organizations are using our buildings as well, so, thanks.
Thanks.
Yes, I would add to that real quickly, like, because I think we did in the fall, didn't we agree, like, we're gonna revisit our security plan on an annual basis? So we put it in our.
Our emergency operations plan, yep.
Correct.
Yep.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna go first?
No, I have to say it's how it's planned.
Safety's one of my favorites. So Kurt, to, to you and Carol and the rest of the team, I know how seriously you take this, of course, so, thank you, thank you very much. So I had a couple comments and a question. The community event, I did, I, I want to amplify what I heard over here from either Lauren or Susan with regards to communications, to anyone who might be in the building. We have a lot of sports teams that'll be there, the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth probably is my guess, even though we're out of school, so thank you in advance for making sure that you communicate with the coaches and those families. You aren't using any type of rubber bullets or anything at that, okay? Because we do see some things like that on the news, so I just wanted to make sure. All right, excellent. I also wanted to thank you for the pre-check idea for visitors, specifically in our elementary school buildings, but in any building, because it does put the office staff at risk. My mom was a school secretary, so frontline, they deal with a whole lot, so appreciate you thinking of them. I had a question with regards to the positive comments that I consistently hear about Officer Gasaway and Community Liaison Don Lupai, and just wanted to know if you had other ideas or plans for SRO and/or community liaisons in those buildings for more or other buildings?
Yeah, so our hope would be that Officer Gasaway wants to continue in his current role. I don't know how well-known it is, but the contract that he originally agreed to was four days a week, so he was working Monday through Thursday and often was off on Fridays. And we approached Chief or Director Hershberger and asked for five days a week, and, and his initial reply was, I'm sure I could get somebody to cover that for you, but Officer Gasaway agreed to change his schedule and go to five days a week, which I think speaks volumes about him as a person, and, and certainly has solidified, you know, our, our appreciation for him. So our hope would be that he stays. And Don Lupai's role right now in the community liaison is something that we're gonna have to evaluate at the end of the year. We were very, very overt with him when we, when we created that position, that our goal was to have a second SRO, and we have conducted those interviews with the city of Celine. I don't think it's any surprise to, to folks, Officer Morgan Seidwa was the person that the city has selected that they want to put into that role, and so the intent would be that that would start on July first. If there was a scenario where we wanted to continue with that community liaison component, it just becomes a, you know, a funding component, but if we wanted to do that, there's no reason that those two roles couldn't co-mingle, as you're seeing right now with, with Officer Gasaway and, and Mr. Lupai. That capacity to co-mingle certainly exists, it's just gonna be incumbent upon us to identify that as a priority for funding.
Can I ask real quick? Was that a new position, the community liaison?
Yes, it was, this year was.
Kurt Ellis, thank you so much for this great presentation. I had a couple more questions, but that's more about timing, and I'll, I'll shoot them out later. Thank you so much. We have, really thank you, I appreciate that you're keeping an eye on things. I'd like to have a, recommend a motion to approve the minutes from the February, oh. Nice. To approve the minutes from the February twenty-eighth, twenty-three, closed session for the purpose of considering purchase or lease of real property under eight D and considering a confidential attorney-client communication pursuant to eight H of the Open Meetings Act.
So moved, Deben.
Second.
Thank you. At this point, our secretary.
I got it.
She's got it, that's why I was, I was looking for you. Will, will provide us a copy of the minutes, and so it'll be a little bit of a downtime for the audience while we review the minutes and then hand them back to her, and.
I'm gonna do it. Bree, if you're still here at the end, I don't know, Dr. McFay might let you gavel
We will be speedy. Secretary Miller, have all the documents been collected?
They have.
And I'd like to, we, I'd like to put this to a vote now, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Oppose, say nay. Abstaining, one. That would be me. Can I abstain?
You can, because you weren't here.
I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't here, we could, or I could show my support for my colleagues.
Yes.
But I'll just abstain this time. Entertain a second motion of three to approve the purchase, get ready, Mr. Grossman, to approve the purchase proposal as submitted by the Director of Technology, Jay Grossman, for the replacement of existing camera system, visitor management system, and entrance intercom system in the amount of one million, two hundred and eleven thousand, twenty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents from Sentinel Technologies, that's for Kita cameras.
So moved. Miller?
Second, Gerby.
Do we, I'd like, Mr. Grossman, do you have any, can we grill you? There may not be any objections, but we may have a camera or two, a question or two, sorry. I do have a question that came to me from a member of the community. I noticed that on, there is a note about a camera on the scoreboard that caught some members of the community a little, they were most interested in that, and I understand that Principal Stager may have something to say about that as well, regarding blind spots.
On the scoreboard of the.
At the field.
Football? Oh, it's probably for the student section, we might guess, is that the limit, yeah, it's the one that monitors the student section across the, across the field.
And that has been unmonitored to this point?
Well, it, it hasn't been monitored. It's been monitored from cameras that do not cover it well, and from the back.
Okay.
So it's made it very difficult in the event that something happens up toward the front, we can't see, and if someone's in distress or if someone's hurt, we can't, we can't view it.
Just per our assessment, we asked, I asked all of these administrators to help identify some of the spots that we've been.
Technology.
There we go. It's brighter, it's brighter green now, sorry. In the assessment of the camera system, I asked all the administrators to provide me with lists of some spots that were lacking in views, and one that came back, actually both from athletics as well as the high school, was that there was some areas on the football field behind and around the scoreboard that are currently, don't have good view or monitoring, so we elected to add some there. We're adding some underneath the bleachers just to give more visibility. As you noticed in Colonel Ellis's report, we're going from about three hundred and fifty cameras to about four hundred and thirty-five, so we're adding everywhere to try and cut down some of those blind spots, and that was just one of the needs that came up from it.
I appreciate that. I noticed that these are also new cameras for the building, the parts of the buildings that don't exist yet, correct? Great.
Correct, yeah. So we built some alternates in there to, since this is a ten-year plan, so we wanted to make sure we account for all those new structures that were coming during this bond.
And Secretary Miller?
Just because you brought up the, the football field, do we ever have to post anything that says like this area is monitored by cameras, like, for example, for our visitors who might not be aware?
I don't know if there's a guideline for it.
Okay.[1765.46]
But, and I believe we actually have some signage, but we would love to check that and I think that's a great idea.
Okay, I just was wondering when you mentioned the student section, if you're expanding that, then it's probably going to capture people who aren't necessarily a part of our community. Okay, thanks.
Appreciate that. Any others? I'd like to put this to a vote then. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All in favor then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You weren't sweating that one, were you? We would like you to stay there. We have, I'd like to recommend a motion to approve the proposed audio/video component package in the amount of $109,090 from Sound Planning Communication as submitted by Director of Technology Jay Grossman.
So moved, Deben.
Second.
Was that Tim?
Yep.
Thank you. Sir, what can you tell us about this?
Sure. So, as we're also getting ready for another one of our bond projects, which is standardizing the classrooms, there's also a need that we found in a number of our classrooms where inferior wiring is already in the walls that's been failing. So, before we get to designing and really bringing in the upgrade inside the classroom, we want to make sure all the wiring and audio components are gonna work. So, we went through, we assessed the rooms that are having these issues and identified what we will need to purchase to get this in there. So, they, they basically all have a same starting point with the equipment in there. And then we'll be, they'll actually be hearing about this and I'm sure upcoming board meetings as we move towards the standardization of the classroom package that we're gonna be looking at.
Super. Any questions?
I do have one.
Oh, we have one from, okay.
So, are, are these bond dollars or is this because it's improvement of current infrastructure? Is this just general?
Actually, it's cabling, so it'll be syncing.
Syncing bond? Okay.
So, yes, this package will not be coming out of the new bond. This is, this portion of it is separate.
Is it sad that I think $109,090, oh, sorry, $90 doesn't seem like a lot compared to all of the, you know, million-dollar approvals that we do? So, I just wanted to make a joke.
I agree. I'm hoping this one flies right through. Yes.
Well, thank you for abandoning the tin can and wire approach we had in the past. I appreciate that. So, if, hearing no other questions, I'd like to put this to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, it's passed. Thank you very much, Mr. Grossman, for your time this evening and for your splendid work that you're doing.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
So, we have two discussion items, well, two buckets of discussion items. I'd like to invite Finance Committee meeting update from Treasurer Brad Gerby, who is also the committee chair.
Yep. All right. So, we, we met today at 5:00 and we discussed a few items and we have a few things still on our quote-unquote to-do list, but that's always good. So, the first thing we talked about was there's a bulletin called Bulletin 1014. Bulletin 1014 takes a look at expenditures with regards to other school districts. So, for example, so for our instructional support, right, we rank 59th out of 822 school districts in the state of Michigan. So, it ranks us on the following things, and I can give you just a few of them. It, it ranks us on our, our general fund revenues per pupil. It also, we pay, it ranks us on basic programs, needs, adult ed, instructional salaries, average teacher salaries. And then it also goes through and it looks at instructional support. It looks at business and administrative costs, operations and maintenance, and then our like total supports, taxable information, et cetera. And there's a lot in this. I'll flat, I'll tell you, there's like category after category. But I guess the big thing that I would say to you from the finance team is this, we talk about students all the time and there are students in the room earlier. And we put our money in the classroom. And the reality for us is if you look at our Bulletin 1014, I could tell you it confirms it. Like, it confirms it and it confirms it big time. You know, like I said, our administrative and business, we're 752 out of 822. So, you know, now that's not to say that that won't fluctuate a little bit year to year based on the needs of our district, needs of our students, et cetera. But historically, I mean, it even gives us, this thing gives us a five-year and we're 752, 771, 726, you get the idea. So, long story short, you know, our, our costs in those areas, we run lean, but we put our money in classrooms and we support instruction. And I, that, that excites me as a parent, as a board member, the whole way. The second thing we talked about was we talked about our spring count. Our spring count, the, the funding is kind of backwards in the regard that we count our spring count, which is 10% of our funding, before we count the big one, which is our 90%, this upcoming fall. So, you know, I, I'm all, that, I mean, there are two things that we can track really for our budget. Number one is our student count. And number two is what is our per pupil allocation from the state? I mean, those are our two big revenue, those are our two operating pools, if you're buckets. And so, the reality for me is we don't see anything with that 10% count, I guess I would tell you, of 48, 47 that gives us any reason or any cause for concerns about being able to meet or exceed enrollment as it's currently stated in our budget. So, that, that's positive and that's a good thing. Let's see, you know, we even talked about there are prospective families and tours and things happening about students and people wanting to come to our school district. So, from an attractiveness standpoint, bravo. And then the last things we talked about, we talked about, we're, we're, this is a to-do item for us. I'm not gonna share it out. But one of the things that we're having conversations about is revenue generation. How do we maximize revenue generation while also understanding that we have, you know, building and operation and maintenance that ranks 525 out of 822. And, and so, making sure that our individuals are, we're maximizing their talents in the ways that they're hired and empowered to do so. But at the same time, like, if we can generate some revenues and we can find some ways to, you know, $50,000 generated here is $50,000 we can spend somewhere else. And so, long story short, we're just being creative and we're talking about those things. That's being let up. I shouldn't take any credit for it. That is being let up and by, by, by Vice President Deben, and I thank her for that. And so, and that's that. And then our, we're gonna have some homework on that. We were talking about it, but, but that's it. So, we'll come back to you maybe with some revenue stuff if we find some things that are really, really great ideas. But I just, you know, I don't want to make a promise I can't keep yet. So, I anticipate we'll bring something. Just, I don't want to put a timeline on it yet. So, that is that. We have good means. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Treasurer Gerby. We're gonna move over to the Policy Committee now and we have a, you're gonna walk us through these four slash five proposals, two of which have been heavily edited or somewhat edited. Thank you.
So, first, let me just say that, you know how we joke about like having a policy on policy? We might actually need to have a manual on how to, how to lead the Policy Committee because this, doing, doing the policy work and the secretary work has been a bit of a learning curve. So, I apologize for some of the missteps that have happened. So, we're gonna begin with one of those, which is the wellness policy. And after our last read, we did a first read at our last meeting and some edits were suggested by you. And there were some edits that had happened in the Policy Committee meeting. And unfortunately, the system has changed. So, those edits no longer come to us automatically in red and green. So, Betty very kindly was able to put some of those highlights in for us. However, it was noted tonight by, one of the things that Trustee Eastup found was that some of the edits weren't made. So, you do have a hard copy and we will be sure to get that published if this moves toward an action item. So, you have a hard copy that has mostly formatting. You might remember in the policy that you had, there were some like letters where there should have been numbers for different points. And so, those were not changed. So, I did go ahead and make those changes. So, where there should be letters, hopefully there are letters, and where there should be numbers, there are numbers. But if we look at either the hard copy or the copy that you have on your computers, the red and green highlights, you should be able to see now. You'll notice a couple of the changes. If you look down under two, item two C, it says, "With regard to other school activities, we moved the item about free water to number three." Is that correct? Four, sorry, number four. So, you can see that we moved that now to be consistent with the other items that were already there. And then in the hard copy that you have, you can see where the numbers that are highlighted in green, those were changed from letters. The other items were there before. We just didn't have the highlights for you. So, if you have questions about those highlights for me or for the committee, we can take discussion on Policy 8510, the revision of Policy 8510 now.
So, I, I have an addition here. So, like, for example, the drinking water was actually added by, like, these suggestions by the current Wellness Committee.
Yes.
And so, that was, you know, something we received and, you know, took back to that Wellness Committee and said, "Hey, make, make some of these changes." And so, that was, yeah, something that we just moved in a different section. And I, I will say, because I kind of caught this and questioned it before this meeting. But I think it's the last green highlight.
Yes.
Next to the last page. And at school level, health advisory teams may assist in the planning and implementation of these wellness initiatives. And just a brief discussion with Trustee Gold before, we, we, we think that that wasn't there initially when it came to the committee. But then in changing placements and stuff, that it was added, it just wasn't highlighted.
Got it. Yeah.
So.
And I, I was sharing with Trustee Eastup that I, because these were inherited, and this agenda was inherited by this current committee, I didn't have the historical, I didn't have the document to go back to look at the history to see where the changes had been made. So, I wasn't sure when or where that had been added. So, thank you for, for bringing that to us too.
If I could note that the original was 2017, which was probably the year that we transferred over from the MASB policies to this. So.
Okay.
It just, yeah, if that helps.
Thanks.
That's basically the only question I had as well is, is I understand why it might say 2017, but why would it say 2021? Is that, that the year, why wouldn't it say 2023 if it were revised?
That was probably the last time Neola had an update for us. That's my guess. Is that, is that what you think too?
Yes, we did have this come. I don't quite remember. It must have, the date must have not have been changed. I know we did have some changes, legal changes that were added based on like the government and stuff that we had put in in 2021. So, I think that's why that was.
But we'll say.
It'll say 2023. If we, if we approve it, it will now change to 2023.
And could you walk us through the, the process of approval? We're gonna let this sit for another two weeks and perhaps put it on the consent agenda next time?
Yes, if, if the board has no further, no further questions or concerns, then we will move this forward to, to the, are we, so help me out. Are we moving it to the consent agenda or are we moving it to an action item?
Oh, in this case, since there were reviews and lots of edits, we should probably make it an action.
That's what I thought too. Okay, that's what my understanding was too, but someone had mentioned consent. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay.
I wanted to add with the Neola 2021, it will stay Neola 2021 because that was a Neola update. But there will be a date from when it was updated.
Here.
At the top, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, at the top of.
In the heading.
The actual policy manual.
I just want to reiterate, in the past, because we've had this conversation, I really, one, I appreciate this, and two, it's really important to me that we have two clean readings of a policy prior to voting on. That's, that's something that I, you know, we talked about previously with policies in the past. This is, this is clean today, clean in two weeks. But I just wanted to reiterate that that is a strong preference for me.
So, today, it's, it should be to you the way, other than for a little bit of formatting. I know my font was really small. So, Betty, feel free to take whatever it needs to happen there and adjust the page numbers. But other than that, if there are no further revisions or questions, this will then move forward to our next agenda as an action item.
And we're going to put it forward without the color coding and everything. It's just gonna be a straight clean, like you say, clean. Thank you so much.
Yes. Okay, if you do have any questions or comments in the meantime, you can always bring that to the Policy Chair or Committee. Yes.
I just want to clarify. So, when you say clean copy, so when these documents that are going to Neola, they aren't clean.
I know.
So, for me to get you a clean.
Yes. So, so this is, this is the issue that we're having right now. The system is not performing in a way that is easy to manage for Betty. And then today, I just finally took it to a clean Google Doc and tried to make the edits because the way the system is working is not user-friendly.
So, Neola does all the formatting for me. So, even though the document that you saw two weeks ago had letters and not numbers and like when it gets submitted to Neola, it's like perfect.
Yes.
They do all the formatting.
Okay.
They tell me, "Don't spend time on the formatting."
On the formatting, okay.
Just put the information where you need it and they do the formatting.
Great, okay.
I apparently get you a clean copy for that agenda, but it'll be a Google Doc. It will be a copy that I will be submitting to Neola.
I think that if, if we can have, correct me if I'm wrong, since you were, since you brought up the clean copy. I think if we can have the document or at least the notes, the language that we are submitting to Neola without the red and green at our next table, at our next action item, that, will that be sufficient for the rest of the board?
Yeah, I'll clarify my comment real quick about what I mean by, when I say a clean copy is I mean, we have not changed any language. So, we did not change any words tonight. We did not, because to me, that would mean that we then are still in debate on this. And I would want our public to be able to comment and that kind of thing. So, that's what I mean by clean. I don't want to talk about like letters and little Neola. You know, I would call that minutia, if you will. I'm talking about, we did not change this document and its interpretation, its language, its anything that tonight.
I'm all in favor, I'm sorry for interrupting. I'm all in favor of making your life as easy as possible, Board Recording Secretary Yonki.
Thank you.
I just had a question. I, I thought in the past we had talked, and I know you're having formatting issues, absolutely understand that. Have we talked about putting draft watermark on, on things until it's ready for primetime? Does that include policy?
I've not been a part of that discussion before.
I would have to download a document into a Google Doc. I have, do not have that, that ability in the Neola site to write some things as a draft.
Okay.
So, I would have to, you know, make.
Just to signify for public-facing documents that it's not something that's adopted.
I think what I should do though is put a cover sheet on it. So, like a policy memorandum, cover sheet on it. So, it says exactly what it is. It's a draft, it's, you know, fore reviewed.
Yeah.
You know, and the action that you're looking for, which would be, you know, look to put on the agenda as an action item.
Yeah, that was what we did with my policies. Yeah, they're rational.
Okay.
And Jenny, I'm happy to, I know the transition was with.
Yeah.
Michael, but I'm happy to kind of go through, go back through.
Yeah.
My organizing and how we did that and work with you on that.
Yeah, I just, it's been a bit of a, a learning curve, especially when the red and greens stopped working. You know, it was just some little surprises. The other thing that I just wanted to, since we're discussing this today, if anyone has anything else to say about this. But the purpose of bringing these to, my understanding is the purpose of bringing these policies to the table twice is so that there are two opportunities for discussion with revision. And then the third time it comes to the table, it's the final edit. Because if we want it to be two times at the table before it becomes an action item, that's going to be six weeks that it takes a policy. And if it's not clean at those two times, it could take us months to get a policy through. So, right now, it was my understanding that we bring it to the table for discussion. And if there are any revisions, we make revisions then publicly. Then we bring it back to the table again for discussion and potential revisions. And then the third time it comes to the table, it is ready for an action item and it is clean at that time.
No, no.
We make no changes to it that evening then?
Right.
None.
But you're saying, Susan, that it has to be at the table three times with no changes?
No, that there's no, in our policy and our board operating procedure, it's twice. And some of those can go on consent, which is like the Neola.
Yes.
Changes or if there were like minor changes. But, and that's the consent agenda. But it's supposed to come for, to the table twice for discussion. So, what happens, like, for example, we, if this is the first time we brought a policy and somebody was like, "Wow, I don't like this," you know, wording. There should be consensus at the table. Not like, "Let's make a change that one person said and then come back and discuss it." But it would be something, like consensus here, that first discussion, the Policy Committee going back to it, making those changes and being okay with it and sending it back for a second time, which could be an action item. But also during that action item, there's still. still ability for changes or for that to go back to committee.
Right, I knew there was the ability for it to go back to committee, I just wanted to make sure that at the discussion, we could have changes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Both times, yeah.
Okay.
And I want to be very clear, I don't want to bog us down for, like, you're right, like, six weeks to get a policy approved. I just don't want to, if, if, I would prefer not to be in a position where I have to vote on something.
Right, I hear you.
That is currently being changed.
Yes, I hear you.
Anyway.
Okay.
I think, I think they're both getting at the same thing, so it's, it's, it's two action, it's, it's reason for discussion, whether there is some or not.
Yes.
An opportunity for public comment, and at any time, a trustee can move to create a new agenda item and move it to consent that evening, the second, if they would like, or it goes on the third as consent.
Yes.
Yeah.
But consent or action. Yeah, okay, okay. Neola updates are, okay. So, moving on to the next policy that we're discussing tonight, it is policy 8390, it is animals on district property. This is also a revision. You can see where there was a red strikeout on page two, number five, and then that was moved to C. You can see the green, like, green highlight there. And then on the last page, you can see where the red was, was struck, and it was moved to the bottom, and you can see the green there. And since we're not arguing formatting, I, the only thing I was going to say about this is page numbers, but Neola will get that all for us, correct? Yep, okay, perfect.
I just want to say thank you for th- those clarifications on this, it's, I think it's a pretty sound policy, and as I mentioned before, we ran it by some of the folks who bring critters on campus, and they, they, they can, which is the, really, the appropriate title for it, critters on campus.
Yes, yes.
But I'm okay with the old title.
Okay.
And, and they said it was, they were not an onerous list of demands, in fact, they were all things that they were doing anyway, so thank you.
And we also had some clarification, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, with legal, about clarifying that this was not a student that the animals. Uh, this one says, though, if the animals handler, oh, is not a student, thank you, thank you. Okay, clarification, thank you, that's on the next one, which is related to this one. So, discussion on 8390? Great, thank you so much. Okay, we'll move that one then forward as well. Okay, and then we have 8390.1. This is a new, a new policy, and so the green that you're going to see were recommendations or changes that we made, and this is where we had legal advice on this, because we wanted to be sure that the therapy dog was, the handler was an adult owner, and that this did not pertain to students bringing therapy dogs to school. Not a service dog, there's a difference between service dog and therapy dog, so this pertains to strictly a therapy dog.
And in fact, I think the policy came from Truun, didn't it? Or originally, this was one of their policies.
Yes.
So, if it's, okay, if it's a new, that's fine, I have no more questions.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? All right. So, this one, there is, the next one, it's actually two policies, because it would go in two different sections on our board docs, because it would be for professional staff and for support staff. So, there is a bit of a discrepancy in the policy committee meeting minutes from the last time we discussed this, where it said it was coming to the meeting for discussion, but that it was also going back to the policy committee, which would be kind of, we, we probably should have brought it for discussion and then decided if it needed to go back to the policy committee, so there's a little bit of a discrepancy in the minutes. However, we're bringing it here for discussion, and if it needs to go back to the policy committee after that, then we will take it back there, if not, then we will proceed with it forward. So, this was given to you last time, this is a new policy, so you're not going to see a lot of reds and greens, however, there are a couple of strikeouts where you can see, and one of the questions that we got just from the community is why we would have this, because if it was threatening behavior towards staff, why wouldn't we involve law enforcement or authorities? And the reason is that there are often incidents that are learning opportunities and restoration opportunities, and there are staff members who wish not to press charges, but would like to have restoration or opportunities for education with those involved. So, this is an opportunity for the school district to support our staff, our students, and families and community members, without necessarily involving law enforcement, however, if law enforcement needs to be involved, then they'll be involved. But again, as you know, sometimes people choose not to press charges, so that was, that was one of the items that we discussed. This, I will also say that this is coming to us at the request of the SCA, and they would like to see, they, they were hoping for support for their membership with a policy like this.
The, if I can add, also, the policy language is found in many, many, many districts across Michigan. For some reason, some chose not to adopt it years back, and I, I think we made that decision as well, I'm not sure exactly when, but we would like to rectify that, that omission at this point.
Yes.
I think my question last time was that, you know, striking out the reference policy 3362 anti-harassment, but then I think you explained it, since it's 3362.01, it is automatically.
It's, it's, so.
That's what gives us the guidance on what constitutes.
So, 3362, this is, that's the, like, header.
Yes.
Policy, and this is the subheader.
Because I, because this was, this is very vague on its own.
Yes.
You need, you know, something to constitute it, yeah.
We need that context. And I think that's initially, in the committee, we were going to add that, and then we realized that it was redundant, yeah.
Oh.
Say thank you, but if you have more to add, please.
Oh, yeah. So, I, I guess I was thinking about why we would bring it back to the policy committee, and I think maybe part of that conversation was that there was a strong interest, comments, we had a few comments.
We did.
On it, and so I don't know if that's why we were kind of giving an additional opportunity on that, and I know this was added today.
It was added, it was on our last agenda and then added again today.
Okay.
And if we decide to move forward, it will be added again as an action item, so the public is welcome to continue to comment, and we do have an upcoming public, or upcoming public comment here today, again at our next meeting, and also at our policy committee meeting on the 19th.
Yes.
Yeah, I guess I would say that, too, and if our SCA is saying to us that this is a matter of importance, then I think that I'd want to prioritize that, so I know from my perspective, I'd, I'd be ready.
Well, still, because we haven't met as a policy committee, still have that opportunity anyways.
Yes.
Before the next time.
Exactly, yeah. That's why, when you raised that concern, I thought, well, since we have now a couple of opportunities for public to either, and, and of course, public can always contact us, independent of those meetings, either at SAS Board email, or, you know, they can contact us individually.
Absolutely, I agree, we give lots of opportunities.
Hearing no further discussion, I want to thank you for this work, I'm looking forward to seeing this as, these as action items in two weeks. So, the next section is on, I really.
Can I, because it's a policy report, can I?
Oh, of course.
Or do, I can do it at our, I'll do it at the board reports and updates.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, I hope that felt less clunky, it felt less clunky to me, I'm working to be more prepared at these meetings and learning as we go, so thank you.
Well, the.
Thank you for your graciousness, and for Betty, I even thanked her with a flower, because she's putting up with a lot for me, she has to deal with me on policy and as secretary, so can't thank her enough for everything she does for us, so, thank you.
And is also historically, this goes back to Paul Heinecke and I, when we were on the policy committee, decided we needed a policy about making policies, and this is still a work in progress, and I don't believe it will ever totally land, and that's okay, it's, it's, yeah, it's the way it works.
Tim, Tim Brad and I are like, looking at each other going, ooh.
This isn't, this is not your finance committee.
I know, finance doesn't have any policies on policies or operating procedures.
I, I would like to invite the administration to make comments and the board to add updates before we get to the consent agenda. Go, go ahead, Dr. Lodge, please.
Okay, I have three. First off, April is Autism Awareness Month, so that's great, and obviously, we have a very strong special education program that always helps support our students, so I want to bring awareness to that. Also, Celine High School, Principal Stager got a memo the other day that congratulating her on the high school being one of U.S. News and World Report's top 250 STEM schools in the country, actually, number 102, and this is through the National STEM Honor Society. So, that's outstanding. And then to sort of piggyback on that, I'm bringing Neil Mogdal back into the fold, because he, there was an article recently written in CNN, and it talks about, it was more geared towards the second-place winner in this case, but Neil was in it, too, maybe because he had so many publicity already happening in, in, in some of his other press releases and videos, and it's just wonderful, but this talks about talent search's first-place winner, Neil Mogdal, told CNN, "The research done by the teenagers across the U.S. is essential to helping solve some of society's greatest challenges." And then he quotes, "I firmly believe that science is going to be the solution to a lot of our problems." His prize-winning project was a computer model that projects the structure of RNA molecules to help develop tests and drugs for diseases such as cancer, autoimmune, autoimmune diseases, and viral infections, and we're looking forward to having Neil be the student showcase at the next board meeting.
Talk about your homework, Mr. Gerby, yeah. So, it's not a volcano project?
I assure you, it is not.
As a, as a science fair judge for many years, the rule is no more volcanoes. Thank you, we'll start with Allison, thanks.
Just trying to remember what my science fair project was. I think there was something involving dye, I feel like I did different colored dyes to try and make you think it was different flavors. Anyway, random memory. First and foremost, a happy and blessed Ramadan to everyone who celebrates. The, there was a blood drive at the high school yesterday, it was pretty successful. I was really sad, because the Snoopy shirts ran out by the time I donated, but if you do want a Red Cross Snoopy shirt, those are available throughout the month of April, if you want to donate some blood. It's testing week at the high school as well, not for me, because I'm a senior, so don't envy you guys, but good luck for the SAT, M-Step, ACT workies, all that stuff, I sympathize, I did it last year. These high school choir went on a trip to Chicago, I believe, last week, so that looked like it was a good time. And speaking of Celine High School doing STEM, March mammal madness was this month in AP Environmental Science, and my animal, the Wolverine, did rain victorious, so, not to brag, but, you know.
I just want to say that, so, I think it was March 31st and April 1st, STEM, again, they had the robotics competition here in Celine, and Stager kind of started it off, and, I mean, it's just exciting to see all those kids, I mean, I don't know how many kids there were, but just, they, they, they put so much into it, and Celine did a good job, I mean, they, they, I think they placed in the top four, so, with their alliances. So, it's, it's, it's fun to watch.
All right, just have a couple of quick items. Number one, Mr. Ellis, again, I want to reiterate my thanks to you for the safety and security report that we received tonight, like, that's so paramountly on my mind and of importance to me, so thank you for that. Since I have to give the SAT tomorrow, I want to say good luck to our testers as well, and I'll even go as far as to give this comment of using our educators' talents for a full week of testing to me is ugh.
I'm on the record saying yuck and ugh.
Well, I will just, I'll just build on that, as the parent of two juniors, whoever decided that the juniors should take tests all week long, probably never lived with two juniors at one time. It has been a stressful week, not to mention that it comes on the heels of a long Easter weekend, where families were busy, it's in the middle of Ramadan, like, all of these things. So, we know for sure that it was not decided by educators or students, and that we should maybe get the ear of our lawmakers and see, see if they have thought that through. And speaking of the junior class, I just want to say a special, special good luck to all of them, eat your breakfast, get some good sleep, and just do the best you can, life moves forward, we'll be okay. One of my kids was saying that they were cramming, and I said, "You've been preparing for this since you were five years old, don't worry about this, this is, this is just digging deep, all of those things, your teachers are going to be proud of you, we are, we already are." So, to those juniors, good luck, and if you know a junior, you might give them a little extra love this week, or drop off a box of goldfish snacks, or, let's see, what are the other popular ones, Cheez-Its are popular, drop off some snacks at the high school, they would, they would definitely be put to good use. I also, building on what Tim was saying about the, I'm blanking now, the STEM activity, robotics, thank you, robotics activities that happened, I just want to give a special shout-out, while a lot of us were on vacation and enjoying some downtime, Lori Dawson, once again, was working tirelessly to make sure that these things went off without a hitch, not to mention all of the coaches and adults who were in attendance to support those students. And speaking of safety, that training is helping to keep those events, like you were mentioning, Mr. Ellis, off, off hours, we need those measures of safety and training to support events like that, so thank you for that. I wanted to mention that Celine City DEI is having a training coming up, and it really complements the DEI work that Dr. Washington is doing, so if you are available on April 19th, if you are not here at the policy committee meeting, on April 19th, there is going to be a training, and it is based on a book called Understanding Privilege, so that is coming up, and Grace Wu had sent me that information. Speaking of policy, our next policy meeting will be on Wednesday, April 19th. You'll note that it is not before a board meeting, like our normal meetings, because our board meetings typically happen twice in a month, but there's been some different kind of timing happening, and we wanted to get that on the calendar sooner rather than later, so it is going to be April 19th, from 6:00 to 7:30-ish, we don't really usually have an ending time, but that's what we have in our calendars right now, but of course, we will stay and listen to public comment. We will, at the forefront, be continuing our discussion and our work on the current policy that is called Controversial Issues. We do have a couple of other policies that should time allow, the agenda will be posted soon, but we, we have a whole list of policies that we want to review, we're finding that as we review one policy, there's some inconsistencies or some other things that we might want to look at in other policies to make sure that we have consistency. Lastly, I wanted to just say that Governor Whitmer is doing some work around education, and in her budget, she has, she is planning for, she'd like to see pre-K for all. Right now, typically, Young Fives programs are for kids with a birth date that falls within a certain range, and so it is not available for other students, or it is limited to students with special circumstances. So, that would be really wonderful to have pre-K for all of our students, and to have that be something that is afforded by the state, so that it is accessible for all kids would be wonderful. She also, this is something that's really important, and I don't think a lot of people in other industries realize this, but as I have kids who are now growing up and getting ready to do internships, those are often paid internships, because when you are working a full-time job preparing for a career, you often don't have the hours needed to work another job, and that is the same in student teaching, when you are working all day, but currently, student teaching is a class, and so not only are you not paid for those hours, but you pay for those hours. So, there is some work being done and some proposals being made to have a student teacher stipend, which just, again, gives credit to the occupation and to the service that teachers are planning to provide and are currently providing in our classrooms, and those student teachers do a lot of work, a lot of work, so that would be a nice thing for them. And finally, this one is near and dear to me, there is an intention or the idea that the literacy coaches in the state of Michigan would be tripled, and that is important to. And that is important to me because, in case you don't know, Michigan is not leading the way in literacy. And literacy coaches do a lot of work and are doing a lot of work to support teachers in aligning with research that we know benefits all of our students, and so that is exciting work, and so that maybe, rather than being at the lower end of our 50, we could move towards the higher end of our 50, or maybe just we could all be, I don't know, I like the idea that everyone would be successful, so. So that, that was some good news too, so I'm excited to see that and how that might translate for us here in Celine. So that's my report.
Thank you. I made my comment at the beginning of the meeting, but I just wanted to add that we had our first planning meeting for a youth forum for Washtenaw youth, and it went extraordinarily well. We have the support of Naomi Norman and Jennifer Banks at WISD, and Ethan Lowenstein at Eastern Michigan University. We have a lot of excellent people who are willing to step up and get it working, and it won't be for every young person in Washtenaw, but representative people from across the county. I'm looking forward to seeing that happen. More information on that as we go along. I'll pass the mic along.
Yesterday evening, we had the Foundation for Celine Area Schools Superintendent Circle Dinner that I got to attend. Big thanks to Wally at Max Seafood Shack, Kitty and Seafood Shack, and Chef for a wonderful meal, and thank you to all of the donors who were there. The philanthropy and volunteerism that we continue to see in this community is unparalleled, and I really appreciate that. Number two, I would like to remind my colleagues here at the table of our wonderful conversations that our guest from Be Smart, I think it was called, sparked another time and encouraged us to remember to put on a future agenda for talking about gun safety, the operational side of that, but also what we can do on the board side. I have not forgotten that. And then I would also like everyone to please keep our Class of 2027 in mind as we embark on our trip to Washington, D.C. at 4:00 a.m. on Tuesday morning. I am absolutely, I'm like going to dance. I am absolutely thrilled that our class trips and field trips around all of our buildings are occurring. It's so needed. And the Class of 2027, which has two of my little ones in it, who aren't so little anymore, this is the only class trip because of COVID. So fifth grade camp was missed, Chicago, Cedar Point, Toronto, you name it, this is it. And so please think of all of them for their safety and their fun and their well-being on this trip, and we're thankful to everyone who is lifting a whole lot to make this happen. So think about those buses rolling out very early, and I'll take lots of pictures, as I'm sure everyone knows.
So, let me see. Earlier, well, no, last week, because we had spring break, so I'm all confused. I attended an event hosted by Senator Sue Schink and some other state reps and senators to celebrate the addition of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression to the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act. Governor Whitmer signed that recently, and that does play into our employees and students and supporting them against discrimination, and so that's having a very big effect, and I'm super excited about it. It's been a long time coming. Let's see. I wanted to share that my wife and our family were invited to attend a dinner hosted by the University of Michigan's newest Provost, McCauley. And, and why I'm sharing that, this, is that it was a very unique opportunity because the Provost invited specifically faculty who have young children, and so it was, you know, that, I mean, like, one of her, you know, first events, and that, that was kind of the, the theme. But our children were also invited, and the Towesley Center, childcare on campus, also, they got some, you know, macaroni and cheese, but they, they watched them during the event, and so it was really nice. I know we have a lot of employees who work at U of M, and so I think it kind of shows that commitment from the Provost and higher-ups at U of M that, you know, they're thinking about the families and how to support the needs of them, so that was, that was exciting. All right, one last thing. March 31st, which was during spring break, was Transgender Visibility Day. I want to recognize our transgender students, families, and community members. Thank you for your bravery in a very difficult climate across the U.S. I'm here for you, and I stand with you.
It was a great spring break. I'm happy that the weather is turning nice. It's been fun seeing some of the spring sports announcements. I haven't gotten out yet, but I saw the lacrosse one, and I know tryouts have happened, and softball and baseball getting, soccer all getting started, so I know that it's nice seeing the kids outside again, and I'm hoping that's going to bring down our viral load for all the stuff I've been seeing in my office, and have me be a little less busy in my other job. I wanted to also mention that it is Earth Month and Earth Day, so thank you for educators who I know talk to the kids about environmental impacts because they come home and educate me sometimes, and I hope that we can, as a country, do a good job of preserving the planet for our kids.
Thank you. Dr. Gold, your comment about viral load just made me laugh because you have no off-button. I love it. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to, I want to add one more thing. I had a teacher contact me with my child on, on the other end, and so, you know, I see that 7344, you know, and I'm like, oh, like, what is it? Which kid? Like, you know? And so it was my child's math teacher, and she said, "I have your child here in the office, like, everything's okay." And she just told me how well they're doing, and just, you know, that they're participating in class, and how she enjoys having my child in class, and, you know, like, that really meant a lot. Like, I, you know, it, it's usually something, right, that, like, some emergency, or, you know, and I, I understand that there's, like, so much to do in a day for, for a teacher, but that meant a lot for, for me and my child, and so shout-out to that person. I didn't ask if I could give their name, so I just, and I know we have a lot of great teachers like that, but it was a surprise and caught me off-guard, and I was, I cried afterwards. So it meant a lot.
Good news. Thank you for sharing. The consent agenda, the consent agenda is listed in this agenda and will not be read aloud. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that any one or all be considered individually. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Miller?
Yeah, thank you.
Support. Gold.
LG, thank you very much. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Hearing none, we have, the consent agenda has been approved. So items scheduled on the next agenda, sir, Mr. Lodge?
And the main scheduled report, report is a teaching and learning update led by Kara and her team.
Excellent. Sounds, sounds like a, a fun event.
My favorite.
They're always like a party.
A data party.
Data party.
Ain't no party like a data party. Yeah, I got it.
Yes.
I'm asking now, Board Secretary, if there are any, there are no public comments in the queue, so I guess, wow, I wasn't expecting that. Paige Turner. The next Board of Education meeting will be held on April 25th, 233, at 6:30. I'd like to recommend a motion to enter into closed session of the Board at 8, we'll, oh my gosh, what time is that?
8:28.
Well, look at that, we've got the big clock up there, yeah. At 8:28 p.m. My muscle memory aims for the round one. 8:28, wow, 8:29 now, ha-ha. With the intent to reopen, open session at approximately, what do you think it'll take? About 30 minutes? 30 minutes. For the purpose of superintendent evaluation, Section 8A, under Section 8A, a simple majority vote is sufficient to enter into closed session, and if I might also note that there will be no, nothing to vote on, so if, if you've been hanging, pardon?
No action.
There'll be no actions and non-action items. Did I say that? Thank you. You want me to use the big words? Okay. It's not an, there's, there'll be no action item coming back to the floor. How's that? Do we have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to enter closed session.
BG, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Sounds like a simple majority. All opposed? Hearing no opposition, we're going into all closed session in about...
Do we have to do roll call on those?
Not for a simple majority, I don't think, but there are occasionally, there are ones where we need to do a roll call. So I'll ask everybody to leave the building. And actually, I should have said 8:35. We're going to take a bio break for about five to 10 minutes and then start. Thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting of April 11, 2023 at 9:14.
Still moved, Miller.
Miller?
Support Steben.
Jennifer Miller, Jay Steben, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are opposed, we are adjourned.